Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Regular Board of Education Meeting for January 12, 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Finesse is stuck in traffic, so she is on her way. Trustee Brilliant, his father passed away on Sunday, so our condolences go out to his family. He's down in Florida, he should be back shortly, so we wish his family all the best. First item of order today is the election of officers for the 2016 year. So, anyone who would like to nominate a person for an office will need to make a motion. There is no second motion required. So, we will start with President, Vice President, and then Secretary. So, do I have anyone who would like to make a motion for President of the Board?
I would like to motion Paul Hinek for Board President.
All those in favor, please reply with a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Trustee Hinek is appointed Board President again. Vice President. I'll jump in here and nominate Tim Austin for Vice President. Tim looks excited for that opportunity. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Trustee Austin is now Vice President of the Board. The Chair will nominate Trustee Delhay for Secretary of the Board. Is there any other nominations for Secretary? All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Trustee Delhay. So, you get to move now, and Tim gets to move. Only one swap. Mr. Hapton, thank you for your services, Vice President, last year.
Uh-oh, here comes trouble.
There goes the neighbor.
And I don't want to have to talk to that end of the table to behave. Also, from an organizational point of view, this year is an election year, so Trustee Hapton's position will be up for a six-year term. Trustee Valente is also a six-year term that will be up for election this year. And Trustee Brilliant would be a two-year term this year to finish off Diane Breeze's position that he was appointed for last year. So, deadline for applications is July, election November. So, we will have a how-to-run-for-the-school-board meeting sometime March or April timeframe for everyone in town that's just gunning to be on the school board. Coming up. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting of January 12, 2016 at 6:35 PM? All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. I'd like to call to order the Regular Board of Education meeting of January 12, 2016. If anyone has any public comment, you may have up to three minutes to speak right now. Any public comment? Public comment, administration, Mr. Gray.
Just a couple of quick announcements. One, I'd like to thank the Transportation and the Buildings and Grounds Department. You know, it took a while to get here, but winter is here now, and over the last couple of days, they both have done an outstanding job getting our kids to school safely, as well as making sure that the parking lots and walkways and areas are secure and safe and ready to go for school. I will be contacting the Washtenaw County Road Commission relative to campus parking. It continues to be an ongoing concern in terms of the attention of that road as it relates to students getting to school safely, at St. Clair High School and at Harvest Elementary. We will be in contact with them related to that. Secondly, Trustee Finesse is our liaison to the foundation. I know she's running late tonight, so I have the honor of introducing Ann Hurst Kreis, who earlier today was appointed by the Foundation for St. Clair High Schools as their first-ever Executive Director. And so, Ann Hurst is here, and can I say a couple words?
Thank you very much. Very excited to take on this new position in the foundation. Started today, and the beautiful thing about it is, I'm an alumni. I have two kids in the district. I love the school system. Been on the Board of Trustees for the foundation for the last two years. So, I hit the ground running and very excited. In fact, right now, I need to run over to Travis to go to a snow blast meeting. We have a wonderful snow blast coming up on the 6th of February. I sure hope I will see you all there. Looking forward to working with you and always a supporter of the school board. Thank you, Mr. Hinek and Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, there'll be an office. We'll keep it kind of down by where Mr. Moss is in the offices. That's all I have. Board members, any updates? Survived the holidays.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed? All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Schedule report, security review process.
Yeah, at this point, I'll invite from Security Education Consultants, Jason Russell Ford. Talk a little bit about our plan. As you know, the community was with the bond. Campaign was going on, certainly following the passage of the bond. The safety and security of our facilities has been really the key component to that. And in doing so, we've partnered with King Scott as our architect firm. They're partnering, they'll be designing and building our secure entrances. But we really looked at taking it to the next level in terms of really understanding what it is about our facilities, how are they going to be safe and secure, and hopefully, what are the practices that are going to go on from a staffing standpoint inside to make sure that takes place? And we've engaged the services of Jason and his team, and we can talk a little bit about what that looks like.
Sure. My business, Secure Education Consultants. We're involved in a variety of things for schools. We started off doing vulnerability assessments. We're made up entirely of former Secret Service agents, a variety of experienced levels, mostly retired agents. And as part of what we were doing with vulnerability assessments, we were getting involved with schools similar to the position that Celine finds itself with the bond proposal, where it was interested in improving in safety and security. And one of the things we found in becoming involved was, we would get involved too late in the project, and we couldn't really make any improvements or make any changes. So, what we began to do is be available earlier in the process so that we can be involved in the actual security side of designing any new features that you put into the schools, whether it be entrances, you know, glass doors, those types of things. Get involved at the beginning of the process so that the correct decisions can be made regarding security. Being that we're from the Secret Service, we have a very... Our philosophy is to design security around the building, not the building around security. So, what we try to do is take the drawings and the concepts that you guys want, the aesthetics that you guys want, the feel that you guys want, and build security into that seamlessly. So that, obviously, you don't want our kids coming into schools to feel like prisons. We want it to be a warm, welcoming, learning environment, and we're very good at inserting those security features that are necessary to make a safe environment into that process. So, what we found is when we can get involved early, like we're doing here, we've done several other districts across the state, and we're in 15 different states, we can make a big impact, not only making sure that the correct decisions are made in terms of what type of security systems or features go in, but also essentially a holistic approach. So, we go from design through training. I used the example with Mr. Gray that a lot of the schools that I go into that have put secure vestibules in have what I describe as half-million-dollar doorbells. Because they're designed beautifully, they're installed, but then nobody's ever trained on how to use them. So, one of the things that we focus on is we'll be involved from conceptual design through training staff on how to actually function, not only those entries, but also hopefully training your staff in some emergency preparedness-type issues. So, we'll be involved every step of the way, making sure that things are done correct from a safety side. We don't draw, we're not architects, but certainly from the safety and security perspective, we're bringing hundreds of years. One of the people that will be involved in designing the features here at Celine was in charge of designing all the physical security at the White House. So, when you look at the level of expertise you're getting, it doesn't get any better than that. So, we're excited to be involved in the project. We're available moving forward with any questions that the Board might have, administrators, parents. We like to be involved as much as we can and help you guys out work through this process. We've done it before with several districts. One that might be recently memorable to you was Rock for Public Schools over near Grand Rapids. A very similar situation to Celine in that they redesigned all the vestibules, and we were involved from step one of that. We're able to step in and act on behalf of the district to make sure that the correct decisions are being made, so that money is best spent. Things are done correctly the first time, because what we find is, once this is done, you don't have a chance to go back in and fix it. Or if you do, it's expensive. So, our suggestion, and what we'll make sure that we do for you guys, is get everything done correctly the first time, make sure your staff is trained. If there's any adjustments that need to be made to the emergency plan based on your new reality, we'll help you with that and make sure everything goes real seamless in terms of security and safety. So, is there any questions I can answer for any of you?
Thanks, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. So, do we know how long this design is going to take?
Well, we've had, obviously, had a few meetings now, and we'll be continuing to have meetings. But my guess is the design function will take place over between now and around March 1st. Bits need to be out early March, so we can go back before spring break so we can really react to where those bits come in. So, yeah, I can tell you feverishly, and I think we've got a board update on the agenda, but I know Rex and David and that team are working daily on that.
Our next scheduled report is the Class Size Task Force presentation. Mr. Latch?
Thank you, and I'd like to call up Janet, Lori, and Alicia, very helpful with this presentation. And we'll get that ready. So, in your packet, you have the presentation, so you can follow along as we go. Thank you for having us tonight. So...
We'll introduce ourselves.
Oh, yep, we're going to do that in just a minute here. So, this is the Class Size Task Force team, and we'll start with introductions here. So, Janet, let me introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Janet Hart. I have two children in the district, a sixth grader at the middle school and a third grader at Pleasant Ridge.
I'm Lori Dawson. I have an eighth grader at the middle school and an eleventh grader at high school.
I'm Alicia Zach. I teach Early Childhood Special Education at Pleasant Ridge Elementary School.
And I'm Steve Latch, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction. The four of us are going to present, but we also have other members of the team, so we want them to introduce themselves. Do you want to stand up? Jackie?
I'm Ms. Jackie Jacobs, and I have a second grader at Pleasant Ridge.
Okay, Jennifer?
I'm Jennifer Edwards. I teach at Harvest, first grade, and I also have two children in the district, an eighth grader and a fifth grader.
I'm Michelle Checkwood. On the principal, it wouldn't matter if I went to school.
Okay, and we have a few other people that aren't here tonight. We'll introduce them on the next slide. But with that said, I wanted to provide a little background. So, we've been studying class size in the district for five to six years and tracking it. And ultimately, we've had reasonably high class size for quite some time. We've had a recent discussion about a year or so ago with Janet, and sort of said, "We need to get going on the reduction of class sizes across the district, but particularly at K through 3." So, what we did is, we formed a group representative of administrators, teachers, and parents across the district to look at class size. And we had three meetings throughout this year. And today, we're bringing forth a presentation and some recommendations. So, we'll go ahead and get started. The group members that are not here, Kelly Piercy, Thomas Bowles, and Jeanne Little, also parents, representative of different elementary schools, middle school, et cetera. Teachers Peggy McAvoy, Max CEO, Jennifer Miller, Brian Bowes, they assisted as well. Oh, Rex is here too. Sorry, Rex Clary. He's helped with the Buildings and Grounds process. Oh, David Raff. Okay, we're missing a few people. We have a lot of people. Julie Halber, who would be here, but she's judging the poetry album competition at the high school. Shall we... And Janice was involved too. So, Janice has helped us crunch a lot of the numbers as well. So, we had a big group, and I feel like we did a lot of work in three meetings. So, we're feeling really good about the outcome and our recommendations. So, we'll go ahead and get started. And Janet is up for the first couple.
Yeah, so first of all, I wanted to thank the Board, Superintendent Gray, Superintendent Latch, for convening the task force. As many of you know, this came about last year with some parental concerns. So, in second grade, my daughter's class last year, there was an unusually large class size in the four sections at Pleasant Ridge. And we wanted to, you know, prevent that from happening. So, we thank you for adding that fifth teacher. And we also wanted to keep that from happening in other classes, in other buildings possibly. So, I think, you know, there were several other teachers added. It was good. And then, the third part of the ask that we had was to look at class size long-term. So, this is excellent that the task force came out of that. So, the task force was charged with reviewing the expectations of the parents and the community members about class size and providing some guidance to the administration and the Board of Education based on the study. So, we were charged with reviewing the current class size at all levels throughout the whole district, both what we have now and we looked at the past five years. And then also to analyze the current data and the impact of class size, not only on academics, but also on the social, emotional well-being of our students. And also to look at future considerations. So, we want to see how lowering class size could benefit, hopefully, and impact the district at all different levels. And we wanted to look at that long-term. So, in keeping with that, we did a lot of those things. We got a lot accomplished in three meetings. First of all, we looked at the current research relating to class size, again, in terms of achievement and also in terms of the student's well-being. Right now, the kind of current policy in Celine is the teacher contract and the language about class size in the teacher contract, so we reviewed that. We also did some research on surrounding districts and also comparable districts to Celine, and had some information presented on that. We also looked at the financial cost of reducing class size to varying degrees. So, we looked at how much it would cost to reduce class size by a few students per class versus the more idealistic expectations that we'd ultimately like to get to. In terms of financial considerations and also comparing our district to surrounding districts, we took into consideration the state foundational allowance, looked at how that factored in. We also explored some ideas such as building configuration and transportation changes to see how that could potentially reduce class size. And we tried to come up with some realistic expectations, you know, for the next year or two for class size in the district. And also tried to keep in mind, you know, we'd like to see those things even getting lower, so farther down the road, so.
So, current research on class sizes as it actually relates to student achievement, there's a little bit of research that's out there about what actually reduction of class sizes does overall. And it supports, it does support student achievement, but primarily in the K through 3 area. The conditions that actually supported this, you know, increased achievement was class sizes of 13 to 17, which is lovely. But it also had the greatest impact on the students that were actually at risk. So, the students that are kind of falling at, you know, the lower end of the scale. There is very little research that actually suggests that student achievement or the reduced class sizes and student achievement impacts the middle, elementary up through, you know, middle school, high school. And that the student achievement by test score doesn't talk about those intangibles, that kind of social and emotional issues that are impacted when they're actually in larger classes.
And then, we did discuss the contract language for our teacher's contract just to show that we aren't violating anything within our teacher's contract with the class sizes that are currently in place. However, you know, you look at kindergarten where it talks about a maximum number of students could be 25, but then technically you can go over up to 28, where the teachers would get paid an additional stipend if they had those extra students. But what we discussed throughout the group, that sure, you could go to 25 in kindergarten and 27 in first grade and 30 in second grade, but that's certainly not ideal. And just because we're not in violation of the teacher's contract, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be trying to reduce class size just because it's better for kids, it's better for teachers, it's better for our community. And so, we really, we showed this, but then we moved quickly on saying, "Sure, we're not in violation of anything, but it's really important that we do this work." With that said, we're going to move on to the next part, which is the five-year trend Alicia's going to talk about that.
Okay, so, we took a look at the five-year trend and started with 2010 all the way to the current school year of, or to the current school year of 2015, 2016. And so, currently, in kindergarten, we're at 23.1 kids, 24.3 in first grade, 28.3 in second grade, and it continues to go up. When you compare those to the averages of over all six years, for the most part, what we've found is that we're sitting pretty low when you look at where we've been in the past. Our numbers are kind of right there in the middle, not to one extreme or the other.
We'll jump back to the actual presentation.
And that's mainly focused on the first through third grade.
And this is the surrounding district process.
So, I've mentioned it before, we also took a look at the surrounding districts. And those districts, some of them have a larger allowance than we do. So, those districts such as Gross Point, Bloomfield Hills, they have more money to make sure that their class sizes are lower, and they have an allowance that's pretty different than ours. So, when you take a look at us in kindergarten, 23.6 kids compared to Gross Point, 20.6 kids or students in a class, there's a significant difference there. The other one that I wanted to note was third grade, 26.7 kids. And then, when you take a look at Gross Point, 22.5 students in that class. So, there is some discrepancies based off of the allowance that we get from the state.
And when we say allowance, that's the per pupil expenditure. It means that we are allocated a certain amount per student in the district. And you're going to see in a minute on the next slide that Lori's going to get into that that's very disproportionate depending upon what district you're in. And so, we can move on to that next part, which is, the question is, why do districts like Celine, Dexter, Chelsea sometimes struggle to keep class sizes very low? And you're going to see that in some of these other districts that are having more money coming in from the state, Bloomfield Hills, Gross Point, Birmingham, you'll see that in the expenditures here. And Lori, you want to review that information?
Yeah, the, I mean, overall, I think as a committee, we looked at, we were kind of pleasantly surprised and pretty proud of how Celine, the majority of our dollars actually goes into instructional spending versus, you know, that other higher gap, like how Bloomfield Hills, you know, their allowance is $12,004 and $9,200 of that. So, you know, looking at where our money is going as a whole is pretty impressive. To kind of make, you know, the relative, what Alicia just went through, you know, so our kindergarten is, you know, 23.6, and, you know, Bloomfield Hills that has $12,000 per student, they're a 20 to 22, you know, is their average. And Birmingham is a 16 to 20. So, you know, when you look at where we're at, I mean, our numbers aren't obviously ideal, but we also don't have the income that's coming in per student. So, they obviously are able to spend more because they're getting more in, and they're able to lower their class sizes because the financial piece is there to support that, which we get into in a little bit, that kind of shows how just a few students, you know, how that kind of makes such an impact on the budget. So, and our counterparts in Washtenaw County are similar, you know, and that's why all of our class sizes are somewhat comparable because they, you know, we're getting about the same in per student. We're spending a little bit more, but our class sizes are comparable to the other ones versus as they get more money in, all of those students, the class sizes for those students in the K 3 element is much more manageable.
And to put that in perspective, so Bloomfield Hills with a little over $12,000 per student and Celine with a little over $7,400 per student, if we were getting the same foundational allowance as Bloomfield Hills, we would have roughly $20 million more in our budget. We're a $50 million budget approximately. We'd have $20 million more to put into instruction and other areas. And Janice helped with this slide together, along with some other financial reports. She did a great job with that, which we really appreciate it because it really does put that in perspective. So, what does it cost to reduce class size? So, like I said, Janice did a really nice job of putting together some presentations, and we're going to go through an abbreviated presentation to look at this. And this is looking at the idea of what would it cost to reduce class sizes down to the level, sort of in that Tennessee Star study where it said, you know, this 13 to 17 really is the ideal range. What would that cost for us to do that? So, we're going to take a look at another presentation here, and we will review that. Okay, so this was back at our November 17 meeting. And we took a look at what our current enrollment is in kindergarten through third grade in all of our three buildings, and we went through that first. Then we looked at the district average class size. For example, average class size 23.5 in kindergarten. This can be a little misleading because at Harvest, it's 1.3 students less than that, or about 22. Pleasant Ridge is right there with a zero, means they are at that number of about 23.5 per class. Well, the Meadows is actually at 25, so you go 23.5 plus the 1.5. So, district average can be a little misleading because some buildings have higher class size than others, and so you're bringing that all together. And we did that in first, second, and third grade. We also looked at capacity. So, if we were to add on all these additional classes to bring the class size down in all of these buildings, what would that look like? And we looked at how many classrooms we had available, how many we currently use for classroom instruction, what's the current capacity, and do we have some additional room? So, we do have some room in the buildings, but not a lot. In other words, to add another 15 classes in each elementary school, we would have to do something drastically different, including open another building or two. So, we looked at targeted class size of, if you said you want a class size to be 15, what would we need? If you said you want it at 17, what would it be? 19 and 21. So, just looking at 15, so if we brought it sort of in between the Tennessee Star study recommendation, between 13 and 17, we would need 92 classrooms. Our current capacity is 57. We would need 35 more classrooms to do that, and then so forth. You know, 17, we want 17 to be the average, 24 classrooms we need in addition, 19, we would need 16 additional... need an addition, nineteen, we would need sixteen additional classes, twenty-one, nine additional classes. So, we looked at that, and we also looked at what would that actually cost? So, Janice crunching all the numbers, saying, what's the average cost of a new teacher and sustained over time, what does that mean? If we went for the targeted class size of fifteen across the district, that would be two point five million dollars in expenses, and then that cost would grow as teachers accrued steps along the way to three point nine million after ten years, and that's an annual cost, and then so forth. So, seventeen would be an additional expense of one point eight million in the first year, nineteen class size would be one point two seven million, and twenty-one class size would be point eight million. So, we looked at that and said, that right now is unrealistic, but what is realistic? And so, that's what we're going to talk about next. Jump back to the other presentation. And Janice is going to talk about the next part. Okay, reconfiguring the elementary schools.
Yes, so one of the things, then one of the strategies that we talked about in potentially reducing class size would be, what if we reconfigured the elementary school buildings? And kind of just for the sake of investigating, we looked at a great configuration with all the early childhood and kindergarten at Pleasant Ridge, all of the first grade sections, and half of the second grade sections at Woodland Meadows, and then the other half of the second grade sessions, and the third grade sections, the entire third grade at Harvest. And what we found was some of the benefits that could result in lowering some class sizes. It would also be more efficient if you added a teacher, that would reduce class size grade wide as opposed to four grade sections, you know, per building. And it would save some money, approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. However, despite some of the benefits of doing that, there are some significant drawbacks. There would be a potential increased cost in transportation. It might be necessary to add a transportation hub so that students could transfer and get where they needed to go, and there's a cost associated with that. Some of our students, many of our students would have a longer ride on the buses, and also, the biggest problem with that is it increases transitions for the students. They'd be basically switching buildings about every year, year and a half. So, we also did some research into how transitions affect students, and found that there wasn't a lot of research on that, but in general, the more transitions that students went through, the more that impacted their learning environment. And finally, the last drawback to that is that we would lose the neighborhood school feel, which is very important to parents in this district, in the community, I think. So, if we could, if changing the configuration would reduce class size, you know, down below twenty or so, I think that this could be brought out on the table again. It seemed to be general consensus in the task force that unless those reductions in class size were very significant, this probably is not worth the extra cost and all those drawbacks that I just mentioned. The next slide also is talking about redesigning busing along with that reconfiguration, and I mentioned some of these things already. You know, that there would potentially have to be a hub constructed, and all of these things would just, you know, cost money, and it would be a lot of shakeup for not a lot of benefit.
Okay. Alicia's going to talk next about what we looked at class size as it relates to the social-emotional status of students, because academics are one thing, and student achievement is one thing, but also, how does it impact, you know, the social-emotional demeanor of students?
So, we weren't able to uncover a lot of research about this. We did go into significant depth with the research that we had, and that really ended up being mostly anecdotal. And so, overcrowded classrooms significantly create safety concerns, not only for the students, but for the teachers as far as crowd management, the number of desks, chairs, people, space. That's physically a very big concern. There's not very little room for people to move about this space freely. That's parent volunteers, administrators, or other support staff that come in and out of the classroom, as well as students and the teacher of the classroom. Too many students in a classroom can make a class difficult for a teacher to meet the needs of all of those students. Differentiation can be tricky, and supervision is another big piece of that that plays into safety concerns. Too many students in a class makes it a stressful and tense environment, special education students as well as for general education students. And that social-emotional piece, we really want to take a look at where our students are and how they're feeling for them to best access curriculum, strive in their academics, and also have social opportunities that are appropriate. And I did touch on the differentiation of the classroom instruction being difficult.
Okay. So, we've uncovered a lot of information and have done the research, and so the question now is, what are the recommendations that we have to bring forward to the Board of Education? And Lori's going to talk a little bit about that.
Overall, the committee's preference was to look at the building class averages, like actually per building, not just as a district overall, but really truly looking at each individual building to meet those needs. Rounding up is the preferred method, so if it's kind of teetering on, well, it might be a little bit too high, but maybe we can ride through it, rounding that up and adding that section, another section of that grade. Obviously, financial considerations and space is going to be a big element of if it's going to be able to happen or not. Like I said, using that up and down rounding philosophy, but by building specifically. Multi-age classrooms was something that we had discussed, looking at having that the older students kind of mentor the younger students, and it builds relationships that If there is space, so consider adding school of choice students in targeted grade levels other than just kindergarten in order to add another section, in order to balance out, you know, a classroom in a specific building. Realistic expectations for the class sizes ideally would be kindergarten twenty to twenty-two, first grade is twenty-two to twenty-four, second is twenty-four to twenty-six as well as third grade. And then four and five are twenty-six to twenty-eight, and sixth grade is twenty-eight to thirty. Obviously, those are ideal, and again, ideally would be the lower end of that, but, you know, that's a realistic range is what we felt like. We do need to keep considering other creative options in order to lower the class sizes and continually look at that, you know, hopefully as our district starts to grow and not just stays level, that it actually, you know, is something that we can continue to look at and come up with other options. And then having the task force meet, you know, annually or when needed to kind of revisit different ideas and, you know, kind of investigate other plans.
Right, and I think I'll point out something that Janice said before. So, this is realistic class size expectation we're looking at right now, but idealistic expectations. We need to keep thinking of creative strategies and look at our financial situation to continue to try to reduce it even lower. So, what we did do as our final slide of the presentation is, I took the numbers that we currently have in the district and moved them forward. So, we took current kindergarten and moved it to first grade for next year, so what we call straight line move up. And then we also decided that we would use the same numbers coming into kindergarten for next year. So, that's a guess. We don't always know who's coming in for kindergarten, but we're basing on what happened this year. So, we moved all that forward to try to determine how many teachers would we need, how many new sections would we need to add if we were to do these straight line move up numbers? And in short, we would need approximately four teachers at the K through six level to reduce class sizes down that hit approximately this range in the target. And so, if we added these four additional teachers, that would do this for the following classroom averages. Kindergarten at Harvest, twenty-two point six, Pleasant Ridge, twenty-two point five, and Woodland Meadows, twenty point eight. At Harvest in first grade, twenty-two point six, Pleasant Ridge, twenty-two point five, and Woodland Meadows, twenty-four point four. Second grade at Harvest, twenty-three point six, Pleasant Ridge, twenty-five, Woodland Meadows, twenty-five. Third grade at Harvest, twenty-three point six, twenty-two point four at Pleasant Ridge, and twenty-seven point four at Woodland. That's a little sticking point potentially just because we're teetering on that number there, but one of the issues too is Woodlands becoming full, and we don't even know that, you know, are we able to add another section there? So, that's something we would look at further. At Heritage, fourth grade, twenty-eight point six, fifth grade, twenty-seven point five in the middle school, and sixth grade, twenty-eight point seven. So, adding those four additional teachers would be the recommendation for next year. We looked at that financially and feel like that would be an area we think we could sustain. Questions from the board?
How do we balance it between the schools, I guess, is my, because if you do have, like at a Woodland, where you have twenty-seven, twenty-eight students, and at a Pleasant Ridge, where you maybe only have twenty, what do we do to, is there a way?
I think that that is the debate. So, when we were talking earlier about banding the buildings together and saying that, you know, all the third grade is that one building, then you are going to have more consistent class size. But the issue is always going to be that you're going to have resident students in different areas. For example, last year, at kindergarten at Woodland Meadows, we had a hundred and twenty-two students, and those weren't any school of choice students. We just had a big, big group. So, you have to do some other strategies. Sure, you could do things where you could talk to residents about saying, hey, we have higher class sizes at Woodland, would you be willing to have your kids go to another school to get lower? Usually, the answer is no. We've tried some of those strategies too.
And so, then that's the next question, is schools of choice students, how do we determine which school they go to, whatever's, there's openings?
In kindergarten, yes. We look at where there's space, and we try to fill that void. But what we were suggesting by targeting some other grade levels is we could say something like, hey, we're feeling like the twenty-seven point four is too high at Woodland Meadows third grade, and we actually would like to add even another section there. So, if we brought in eight students that we don't normally bring in at third grade, that could fill the gap with the idea that, you know, seven thousand dollars, seventy-four hundred per student times eight, you know, that's roughly the cost of a teacher. So, that's another strategy we could use, and we will talk about that as we start to see the numbers.
One of the things that, you know, we do have neighborhood schools, the school of the district is divided into three areas, we're residency zones, and so we do have areas, we talked about in the past, being buffer zones, so that, you know, in addition to school of choice, can we balance class size using these buffer zones? You know, it's pretty, you know, technical from a logistical standpoint in terms of transportation. Also, it's concerning for families, you know, if their neighbors are going one school, there's inherent interest, I think, from a community standpoint, in having neighborhood schools. Class size is one of those things where we really need to focus on what's the right step, because we don't have the type of flexibility to just say, you're going here, you go there. If you may recall, Celine, we went to nine neighborhood schools for several years, and literally, you could be right next door from a student who went to a different elementary school. And that was done really so they could balance class size in the community after several years. And one, if logistically it was hard to manage, and second, we did not have that neighborhood feel we wanted, so we look back to this and have that for ten plus years.
Other questions?
Yeah, if you, if you ended up with, you know, larger class sizes, is there something you can do with support or volunteers to help, you know, get more instructional time?
We did look into that as well, and we actually have done that before. We were bringing in additional parent educator support or aid to assist in the classroom. However, we did a little research on that as well, and that doesn't necessarily increase student achievement. However, it could increase just general support in the room to, you know, another helping hand to be able to support small groups of students. So, that would be something that we consider too, if we were teetering on that line where we thought it might be good to do that, we would consider something like that.
Was there any discussion about the impact of the next gen classroom, that class size? I mean, it's kind of a, I guess to me, it took a little bit of a different learning style. Does that help or hinder the number of kids in the class? I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
In other words, opening up the classroom to have more movement and different types of furniture and whatnot, would it, would it allow for that? We, I mean, to be honest, we weren't really having that kind of conversation to say how that would impact, but I think that's a good point to look at, is that, you know, as, as classrooms are reconfigured, as we move forth with the bond process, does it give us some opportunities to create the classroom setting so that it would support, you know, a certain number of students in a better way?
I mean, if they're, you know, doing one of their activities where, like on Heidi's idea, a parent might be able to come in and kind of corral, saturate kids together to do that activity as opposed to having, you know, a teacher doing everything with all the groups, the way those classrooms run.
And that's a good topic that we could address moving forward. As you talk about the class size task force getting together again in the future, not that we would meet three times every year, but maybe we would meet a couple of times, and then as we look at future considerations, those are, those are some good things to talk about. Other questions?
So, I would add four teachers to it. Janice, what's the cost again, of adding four teachers?
One teacher would be around, just under seventy thousand, so you're talking around two hundred eighty thousand.
Okay.
First year.
First year.
First year.
Any other, from any other task force members that are out in the audience, anything to add that we're forgetting? Okay, well. Thank you for your time. Very good. Thank you.
Our next bill, oh, we're in the action, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve any fuel as the high school students represented to the board for the remainder of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year?
Second.
I'd like to call Heidi or Annie up to talk a little bit about why she would like to be student representative for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Grayden. I just wanted to say thank you for all of you for considering me to be the student board representative. I am currently a college-bound Celine High School senior. I have been involved in a number of activities over my four years, including cross-country, Strive, NHS, and even for finals, which took place last year. I very much love the Celine community, and I'm very excited for this opportunity to bring a student perspective to the school board. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we should explain that our original student representative, Yuha, made the basketball team, so he's kind of tied up in games and practices and stuff, so we thought we would bring on another student, and when Yuha's done, we can have, our policy allows to have more than one student representative, so going forward in the future, we may do that as well. So, any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing non-motions approved. Congratulations to him. Come on up. Not that we knew the outcome, but just the elves made it while we were voting. Can I have a motion to approve the high school course adoption for the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Lott?
I'll turn over to Assistant Superintendent Lott.
Okay. We have three courses that were proposed as for next year's courses, and we looked at specifically for these courses, and what's the need in high school? And we feel that all three of these have a significant, we'll start with classical civilization, so this is Greece and Rome, and talks about the development of specific acts, aspects of each civilization. One of the things we thought was great about it though, was the creative nature in which the course was designed, that one of the authentic audiences that they were focusing on was that, and I'll read this, beyond the transfer of knowledge, students will be challenged to create interactive, entertaining, and academic museum exhibits for elementary school students. So, if there's a teacher who wants to take me, and think about how is this going to be an engaging course for students, connect history, and then have the authentic audience of elementary students around a museum exhibit, just made a lot of sense that that's the direction we want to move toward, that project-based learning, a course like that, and limit a number of electives within the social studies department. So, that's the first course. The next one is introduction to foods, and this would support the culinary program at the school, but largely culinary through CTE is after students are, you know, hey, I'm going to take and commit to this idea that I'm really interested in culinary. This is an intro class, a one trimester class that even a freshman or sophomore could take to see if that's an interest. And there is this growing interest in culinary, but able to have an introductory class, see if kids want to continue, really made a lot of sense. And then the third course is learning to breathe. This really connects with our social-emotional goals in the district in that we hear a lot about mindfulness, that that's about this, like talking to students about learning about that, reducing stress, greater control over emotions, thoughts, and, you know, we talk about sometimes the high pressure at Celine High School. about sometimes the high pressure at Saline High School, and that this course would give students an opportunity to take a different type of course that they haven't come up with in all one trimester courses. So all three of these, we think, fit with our mission and our district's strategic framework. So those are the three courses. I think we're going to note that the process has changed and runs more through our curriculum department through... So we'd like to applaud Steve. If you recall, last year, there was some confusion in terms of the process and role. These are being recommended by Assistant Superintendent Lodge.
Learning to breathe, how are the students evaluated in that course to get a grade? I mean, I just...
Well, this pretty learns, and it's that in a... And as a course outline, it talks about all of those things. Some of this is participation, so as we look at that, nature of the course is developed around skill sets that require students to be fully engaged in classical duties and practices. Eighty percent is projects, unit application, personal goal assessments, and five percent is a personal application project, which would be the final assessment. So that is how she plans her cells.
You should come get the board a credit.
Right, she can come do the class.
You can just all that.
I don't budget time, that'd be good.
I think I need that, so when I see it in traffic, I can press that for you.
That right.
That would be yell therapy. Done there.
An ad hoc course, it's a great teaching.
No credit giving. Any other question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes six-zero. Can I have a motion to appoint the board's recording secretary, Patty Walz, board secretary, trustee Delhay, and superintendent Grayden to serve as the board designees for posting legal notices for the 2016 year? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries six-zero. Can I have a motion to approve the 2015-2016 contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services? Someone? I'll second.
These are contracts that are in place. Frankly, should have come to the board earlier if it were had been. And so they reflect the three-year agreement, they say 2015, but they're the ones that are issued now, and would run through June 30th of 2018.
Yeah, Scott and I had a little communication issue here about whether these were brought or not brought, so it was, I think, mostly my fault. So any questions on the contracts at all? I think we had discussed them before, we just didn't really approve them. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries six-zero. Can I have a motion to approve the letter of agreement between the Board of Education and Saline Area Schools Administrative Association, SASAA?
Come on.
Working with Rose Leacher through the SASA group, we've asked that they extend their contract to meet the same endpoint as the Saline Area Education Association. If you recall, our ESP and SASA were on the more traditional fiscal year contracts, and we've moved the SEA to a calendar year contract. We've seen value in that model, and we'd like to... And so SASA has agreed to move to that model, but they're were extending the current terms of their agreement by six months. There are a few members who are due steps. They would receive steps now. In turn, we'd extend it, still be the midpoint of their contract, because now there's additional six months on that. And then we are also have had early communication with the ESP, the support staff personnel, also looking at the same model to get... So all of our contracts lined back with that December 31st, January 1st timeline. It's not without some issues in terms of from a fiscal standpoint, but from a tax standpoint, and frankly, from a timing standpoint, the way we're funding with information coming with student count in the fall, we really, I think, we're finding that it works well for us. So we're asking the board to consider that, and I appreciate SASA's support in considering that movement as well. This does not include any percentage increase associated with the compensation or any other changes to the terms of that contract.
Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six-zero. Can I have a motion to approve the refunding of the outstanding school bond loan fund, school loan evolving fund balances as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner? Someone? Second?
So we currently have a balance of about thirty-one million in the school bond loan fund. It's one fund, but it's kind of in two different parts, and it's at a current rate of about three-point-four percent. That rate that we're charged on that money can't go lower than three percent. So if we refinance the balance of that thirty-one million through the bond market at the same time that we're issuing our new bonds, we should be able to realize a rate closer to two to two-and-a-half percent, which would save us about one-point-four million over the overall term of the... Our loan. And it would accelerate our last payment date by one year to 2025 rather than 2026. And additionally, it would drop the total levy mills from eight mills to somewhat lower one year earlier in 2024, so that our residents are paying a little less, and then it would continue to drop every year thereafter. We do have Paul Stotter here from PFM. If you have any questions regarding this, I know it's kind of a complicated issue. So Paul, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, you said it just perfect.
Okay. So anyone have any questions?
It's saving us money.
It's saving us money, yes. It's helping the taxpayers as well, yes.
We know the state will not reduce your rate below three. It's rated standard, so you can borrow lower than that, you would save money.
Are friends in Lansing, are you willing to give us a break?
Even if their cost of money is less, no.
Actually, the savings, I believe, could be greater, because you have to use pretty conservative estimations. Is that correct?
That's right. If you pay off your loan at a faster pace, it would save you a few months.
Sorry, our annual savings, roughly?
Don't remember.
Hold it to... It, the transaction is about over five years. We expect initially about three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, and that'll amortize down. That's where we get the overall about one-point-four million.
So our four teachers were too...
Looking at it for our new four teachers.
Well, this came up with a fall leg. We can't move this money into any other budget stage.
So it's a gift to the taxpayers.
So these are going to go out at the same time our bond goes out? Rates have been pretty stable lately.
They've come down since the last time I was here, so we're closer to getting it done, so hopefully... And today, we're lower than that three-and-a-half percent range for the twenty-year issue.
If you recall, we budgeted five percent, so that would be savings on the budget.
Yeah, it'll be substantial.
Great. Thank you, Paul. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six-zero. Discussion items: the Pleasant Ridge Animal Therapy Program.
There's a enclosure in your pack, and I have Brad here and Miss Arnett, the younger Miss Arnett, here to talk a little bit about the pet therapy program. As you know, we have Pete the cat at the middle school. The high school's done some things with the furry around finals in terms of using pet therapy as a kind of a stress reduction. And I did have Principal Bezu here and Miss Arnett to talk a little bit about what their intentions are at Pleasant Ridge.
So we're excited to jump into the middle school and the draft. We're kind enough to share their information with us about their experiences with Pete. So we are going to have Lacey come in every Friday. She's going to be working in my room. I'm a special education teacher with a resource room, so we'll get to have her every Friday. She's trained in a program called Therapause of Michigan, so she's been to a lot of libraries and had kids read to her. And there's some significant information that shows, you know, kids have a reduced stress level and kind of reduced fear of judgment while they're reading to an animal opposed to, you know, a teacher that might give them some different kind of feedback than a friendly dog would. So that's where we're headed, and we're very excited. The copies on your tables are just kind of the rationale for the therapy dog. And then there's also our frequently asked question sheet for parents that I plan to send home, and a permission sheet as well, so.
I think it's important also to focus on the strategic framework part of this. Our Goal Three and our positive environment, this kind of program really supports all of that. We've talked a lot about that tonight with class size and breathing and mindfulness, and this all goes together with that, because we do need to be very creative in helping our students have a more positive experience, less stressful experience at school. And I think that this goes a long way in helping with that, so.
In effect, we did try and get a dog tonight, but we weren't able to.
Yeah, she, the dog lives on a farm, and, you know, they've got horse lessons and all kinds of stuff. She is a La Corgi.
We did scan the database for allergies in the building.
Yep, and then our insurance pieces and reviews, and an opt-out piece as well. Certainly, we want to offer that to our parents when we look at this type of programming as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget committee update?
Yeah, we met on December 15th, and we talked about the five-year planning tool. Janice put a lot of time into that, there's a lot of background information, but it's very beneficial. We can, if like mixer rates change, we can see how that affects us going forward for five years and stuff like that. And then also, we looked at the EDIX. It's a comparison tool, so we can compare how we rate, and I think this is probably what you use for the student count with the district for financial things as well as academics.
I will note that the three members of our budget committee were extremely excited about that EDI tool. We're looking for logins and passwords to play with when they got home. So we did see, as I think, it says it's a powerful tool, and something that I think we'll talk more at the retreat about, what are some of those reports, it's not annoying information, it's really informative thing as we look at budgets and different aspects of our programming, what are those things we do, and really benchmark ourselves.
See, we were compared to the other districts, yes.
There were two of the data points on the finance report in the board packet, so it's that kind of data.
And we will probably be meeting towards the end of this month before the next board meeting to kind of discuss the amended budget.
Board committee assignments. I will be distributing everyone's favorite list of committees to see if we want to do any swapping, so just kind of talk about it in your mind with yourself to see what challenges you're up to this year. And that leads us to the board retreat. We'll discuss it then and kind of finalize everything. The retreat will be next Tuesday from six to eight, probably in Room Thirty-three. I have gotten some agenda items from some people. If you have any more, just pop them on to me. We got a pretty full list of a lot of just miscellaneous topics, and Janice will show us this wonderful tool, so we can all be excited about what we need. Looking forward to that.
Finally, but not least, the bond update.
Yeah, and Mr. Raff and Mr. Clara here to talk a little bit, can't be willing to talk a little bit about what we have going on. We did meet, the first week we came back, there were probably at one point on Wednesday, approaching fifteen members of various groups working, and really assessing and verifying and defining. We got together on Thursday, and I'm going to forward those notes out to the board. It's an extensive process, and I think it's been an informative process for us to think about, you know, the ideas and concepts that we had, the dollar figures we had associated with those, where do those priorities stack up? And then ultimately, really verifying, and we talked a lot about what we wanted to do in the concept forum, and to really dig in to see where we're at on those. And so I think it's been a lot of touring abilities, there's been a lot of very specific kind of detailed collection associated with that. We will be meeting again this Thursday, we've given them some feedback, they've given us some ideas. We are still targeting a very aggressive approach to summer 2016. And so in order to meet those timelines, it's going to be a real fast pace to what we have going on during the day. One of the things with the board and keeping the board informed, we talked about having a specific meeting for at least a couple of members of the board in the evening coming up soon to kind of talk about where we're at, because it's going to be, as we move from now until really about the first part of March, a lot of things are going to come together and need to get out to bid, so we're going to be looking for some feedback on that to make sure that there's kind of a... Everyone's on the same page, there's a great deal of clarity around that. So one, be ready for those things. The next thing is really communicating out what is, what are the things that people are interested in about? We want to make sure people understand what we're doing with the bond, but also sharing the notes from the steering committee meeting really isn't that informative unless you have a fair understanding of the projects associated with it. So we met today, one of our things, our administrative meeting was to kind of brainstorm what are questions they had, what are the questions they're getting from staff? And then also, the end of the month, we have a couple of focus groups, some of you may have gotten an email, may have gotten another one actually today. We're trying to recruit people in, and K-12 Insight's going to come. I won't be in the room, board members won't necessarily be in the room. They'll have an opportunity for people in the community to kind of ask questions and get some clarity around what are those things we need to be communicating regularly out so that people understand the timeline, they understand the decisions that are being made, and there's really some transparent discussion about the priorities that we've established as a district. So that's where we're at with the bond. It's something we're dealing with a lot every day. It's exciting, it's also kind of daunting, so.
So with the Michigan Avenue construction, it's like Saline Orange Barrel City?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be, well, one of the questions we had, you know, in terms of some of the things that have come up to that point, it's a little bit like the construction in there. It's not about the bond itself, but it's what activities they'll have, what are those activities that have typically taken place that need to be moved? So Mr. Clara here today at the administrative meeting talked about the buildings that would be literally unavailable, and Mrs. Chalcakewicz joked about needing a helicopter pad to get to Woodland Meadows, because it's likely that the areas around Woodland Meadows and Heritage are going to be really treacherous to get to that building, and do we need to think about off-site housing? If we do building tours, how do we want to handle that with students and things? So there's a lot of, kind of like you say, those operational logistic components that are unrelated to the actual projects but are related to that.
Like a good project for virtual building tour material.
Any other bond update? Question?
Mr. Raff or Mr. Clara, do you have anything to add?
I think the data space for this 2016 is going to be our secure best fuels in our buildings, and then the site project at Woodland Meadows and Heritage is going to be a big piece to get done in the time, so.
The last thing I want to add, and this is something that did come up a little bit today, it's come up, you know, one of the things that we want to be, and I can tell you that the steering committees talked a lot about this, it relates to things like technology, is that we're selling the bonds, we're going to have these dollars. We are not, you know, with the exception of the projects that we talked about that need to be aggressive with, we're not in a rush to spend those, nor are we in a position like we've been in the past with previous bonds, where we talk about this rule of bust. And so the message to staff and to the committee is not that, hey, you're going to come back on in August, and there's going to be a new computer on every desk. Our focus is to be thoughtful about what we do. Just because we have those dollars in place, we need to really think about long-term infrastructure, stretching those dollars as far as they go. And to that point, Heather Calstrum's working with an E-rate, which is if we all pay E-rate on our phone bills, if you ever look at it, there's dollars that are collected that are redistributed out to try and lower our costs associated. So we're going to wait for some of those, that information, because we can save literally forty cents on the dollar, depending on how that comes through. So again, we're trying to leverage those dollars in a way. So I just want to be clear that what people may remember from previous bond issues, particularly as it relates to technology, is not what we are expecting with this one, because I do recall us getting devices, because that's when we had the money. It's really not the focus this year or this time. And so it has a conversation with the staff, conversation with the parents, but that's a real shift in terms of thinking, because we want to be thoughtful, and just because we have it, doesn't mean we have to spend it, and we can try and extend those dollars out as long as possible.
How are we doing on bus orders or bus research?
We are getting new buses. We've, they've, the transportation department's looked at several different options, and it's gone on, the Michigan School Business officials have a statewide bid program. They've gone on, built, essentially built and designed three of the four models of the buses we want. There's ones that have certain fixtures and features that we want, and so we built those, and now companies can now bid on those. We have looked at propane buses, we've looked at diesel buses, we've looked at virtually every make in terms of the type, both of them are on Cummins diesels now that are non-propane, and then certainly Thomas, International, Bluebird, all of the body chassis types we've worked on. So Rex and Mr. Clara and the team have looked at a lot of different things. looked at, so Rex and Mr. Clara and the team have looked at a lot of different things, and we've kicked the tires on them, they've driven them, we've brought them into town, and so, now the auto show is going, if you want us to go on the auto show, I'm sure Scott and I would be willing to pick up a couple of secondhand, yeah, if you want to concept, that conceptual view, it'd look nice, and we want to go out on.
Which one of the fuels are you considering?
Well, we are considering potentially both, one, we're intrigued by the propane, we went down and visited them, the Rousch makes this clean tech propane that is intriguing, it runs a lot cleaner, the cost of propane is extremely low, it's domestic, it's fully sourced, the issue is you don't get the same, it runs, there's torque issues there, and it runs not the same, you don't get the same price per mile per gallon, so we've looked at some scenarios where how long would it probably, you're going to pay about $8,000 more for a propane bus, the chassis, the bus itself, as far as really just about, and in doing so, how long would we have to run that bus to be able to save money, really it's predicated on what is that cost of propane, but it would include a filling station, and so to that point, the filling station would be something that typically your propane provider would, you would either lease it from them typically, and they would be in charge of that, and that would be factored into the contract associated with your price per gallon.
Is cold weather a problem?
Cold weather's better, propane is better, you don't have to use heating blocks, they start up to, yeah, the diesels gives a lot more trouble in cold weather than the propane does, and this is, again, you know, it's funny, because Patty Hanus, if you may remember, out back, and there's still a gate in the fence, we used to run propane buses, we're back, and she recalled putting on the big gloves and managing the propane, the refueling process, and that now it's a quick couple snap and go, the odor associated with it is very different, again, that was one of the things we specifically wanted to look at.
To be certified to fuel those buses up?
You don't need to be certified beyond what you have to be somewhat certified now, there's a process associated with refueling period, but not, there's no additional certification. In fact, again, their pitch is that it is safer, because there's not such thing as a propane spill, because if it goes, it goes up in the air versus the diesel body, so if we were to look and strongly consider propane, it's certainly something where I'd have them come and present to the board, talk a little bit about what clean tech or new age propane looks like.
Is there a scenario where like the city buses would do better on propane and the country ones on diesel or?
Potentially.
I mean, I know those buses are typically lighter, and they're not built for the country roads.
Right, essentially, yeah, in terms of type of chassis, we're looking at, yeah, something along those lines.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of December 8, 2015, approval of the special Board of Education meeting minutes of December 15, 2015, approval of payment of general fund accounts payable of January 12, 2016, in the amount of $1,119,247.36. Receive and file the January Curriculum Finance and Human Resources reports, approval of the following field trips as submitted by Superintendent Grayden, AP History Class Trip to Boston and New York, approval of the early graduation requests as submitted by Superintendent Grayden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none, the motion carries six zero. Items on the next agenda, our next meeting is going to be a finance budget focus, finance budget study session. So, bring your calculators.
We've all dreamed of.
I dream about it every night.
So, we have a medium list of topics to discuss financial-wise, and it'll be a lot of good stuff. We would, I don't know what else. This is the second opportunity, if anyone would like to have public comment. Our next meeting will be January 26, 2016, at 6:30 PM, right here at the Liberty School Media Center. Can I have a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of January 12, 2016, at 7:45 PM? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.